I'm going to call the meeting into order. This is the regular July 24th meeting of the Barstown City Council. I know we have some people in the audience who have agenda items on related scenes and if anyone in the audience wants to be recognized or address the council or something that might not be on the agenda. Okay. Scene, I'm going to move one of our agenda items up in the order of municipal bonds for Bethel and sign number 11, since their attorney is here representing them, but he's actually out of the clock, we probably don't need to make him wait an hour or something. Working on this, so.
All right, so just this is for the council members. On your agenda, the resolution should only have Resolution 2018-08 highlighted as your hyperlink. If the entire language, that entire industrial building revenue note, so on, is highlighted, you'll need to back up, hit the refresh button at the top, and then come back to the agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
So with that being said, I would call on Mike Carrington, representing Bethel High School, with his municipal bond resolution.
Good evening, everyone. I was here, I thought it was going to be a little earlier than this, but it was in early May, I guess, sometime like that, when we came down for the first part of the resolution, which is the inducement. But since then, up to now, we've been working on getting all the financing finalized, and happy to say that we have it. And in fact, we had to do something today, which in the resolution, we had to move out maturity date one month from July 1, 2025 to August 1, 2025, to show how the principal payments were going to work out. So one of the things that we are doing is we, we would have a public hearing right now for a tax exempt issue, which is required by the term revenue code. But in the course of learning about the project, we understood that the notice of public hearing said the project was going to be at the current location of the high school. And in fact, as most of the people here know, and as I actually noticed as I was coming in, it's in a totally different location. So we had to republish that notice of public hearing, and that meant that you have to have 14 days notice in advance, at least 14 days, under the term revenue code, to have a valid notice. So we had to move that public hearing to next Monday. So the resolution, as it's set up, the last provision of the resolution says that it's subject to having that public hearing at noon on next Monday. So that's scheduled for then. Otherwise, the resolution, as it would be adopted, what it does is it authorizes the execution by the mayor and clerk of the documents that are the principal documents, for which, again, as I brought up the last time, we'll bring up this time, there's no liability in the city. You have to do this in order to get the tax exempt rate, it has to go through a governmental entity. So what this resolution does is it authorizes the execution of the promissory note, which will be signed by both Bethel High School and by the city in favor of who is going to be the note holder, which will be Wilson &amp; Europe Bank &amp; Trust Company. So they're doing it. The interest rate is 3%, and it's covering the maximum amount of the bond or the note, which would be three and a half million, if that's all that's drawn, if all of it is drawn by February 1, 2020. To the extent that they don't draw all that, there will be an adjustment on the note, the schedule that's attached to it that shows the principal amounts that will be adjusted down. But the maximum it could be is set up with the note, the way it's established right now, doping, putting in the bond. It shows that assuming that three and a half will be drawn, all drawn down. So the school will end up paying the interest only up until February 1, 2020, so they only have to pay interest for that amount that's drawn from time to time. And then after, beginning of March 1, 2020, they'll end up paying both principal and interest to start to pay down the loan. The payments, as we pointed out before, are guaranteed by the Archdiocese of Louisville, and so that's the key to, from the bank's perspective, for going through and approving the transaction. So with that, the resolution.
I hope, I hope this will, Mike, what we probably need to do is ask for a motion to approve the resolution and with it being read in full, I think would be the proper way to address it. So I would ask for a motion then to approve the resolution as read. So, a motion by Councilman Powell, a second. Section to Councilman Williams. And I think we'll go ahead, we'll ask for a discussion after the resolution's been read.
Okay. So, "Resolution of the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, the City Council relating to the financing of all of a portion of the acquisition, construction, planning, and installation of improvements to the athletic facilities, which comprised of two parcels, aggregated approximately 40.4 acres, located at the intersection of Kentucky Highway 245 and Templeton Avenue, Bardstown, Nelson County, Kentucky, for Bethel High School, located at 309 West Stephen Foster Avenue, Bardstown, Nelson County, Kentucky, defined as the project. Agreeing to undertake the issuance of the City of Bardstown, Kentucky Industrial Building Revenue Note Series 2018, find the note in an amount not to exceed $3,500,000 at the appropriate time to pay for costs of the project. Approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement among the city, the Roman Catholic Bishop of Louisville, a corporation sold, doing business as Bethel High School, the Roman Catholic Bishop of Louisville, a corporation sold, and Wilson &amp; Europe Bank &amp; Trust Company," be the notes. And C, any and all of them related documents, and authorizing the taking of other preliminary action."
Do you have any, do you have the rest of it?
I think that's all I need to do is read the summary.
Is there a mic comfortable with that?
Now, is there any other discussion or questions before we go from there?
Just a clarification, the city's only involved because of the tax advantages for the school.
Correct. There's no liability. The liability rests with the Archdiocese of the school.
And what I, I was telling the mayor earlier, when I initially read this, it looked as if there was some liability on the part of the city, but when I got to section seven, I could obviously see that that was not the case.
Correct. There's always a section that I put in the, that's resolution ordinance, to make sure that's clear. Trust me, I'm also, I'm a city commissioner for a small city in Jefferson County, so I'm always looking for that myself.
So any other questions or discussion? Carrington, and then, on the favor, the city about to say an aye. 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 Motion, Carrington.
Thank you, Lord.
And I guess we'll see you Monday on the service.
Yeah, we may not even, oh yes, you will be public hearing, you will. And then I'd like the documents, I'm a, I'm comfortable with you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the bid tab for the, the soft, option bid tab for the soft coming year. Think you can look through that. See that Jessica has recommended a loan bidder of Compass Materials, Compass Materials America, 110, and then, I think, I guess, we even have to formally approve that, I don't think we do.
I'd rather we do it, and not need to.
So I'll make a motion to, we accept the Compass Materials America Incorporated bid of $110 per tenant.
Motion, a second.
Second, Mayor.
Second, my councilman knows. Any other discussion?
So we're going to purchase this right now?
I think we have to, because that would lead time, otherwise.
The price will go up.
That impossible.
Before the run out of salt, as the supply is going to be on the price goes up, I think.
If we were fortunate this year, we still had some supply of that, but there was other parts of the country which you lived, you could not reorder, and if we, if we had run low, we would have had a hard time getting it, because other parts of the country ran out of salt, and suppliers were out as well, so. So, all in favor, then, the city about to say an aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion, Carrington. Thank you. Okay, got a number of HRB recommendations, and before we get into reading my last, my city clerk, Mary Riley, to read them, but I would point out that on the very last one, is COA-17-17. You probably need to table that one, because that was a denial, and we don't typically overturn or vote on denials, short of an appeal, like we had with this same property last year. And also, I think, I didn't get a chance, it's too late today, I think part of your all's motion last year to allow this roof to stay, stay that you all would revisit it, and look at the patina on the thing, and decide whether you want to change it. Without our city attorney being here, I'm not comfortable with asking you all to take action. I don't know whether you need to take action on your motion and vote for the last year or the current process, which I think typically a denial, it means you go through an appeal process to come back to the council, to over.
Do you need to approve their denial first, and then allow the appeal structure, or the appeal to take place?
Actually, I don't think we get denials unless somebody appeals it.
If you see the word above that, then it was strictly, then I think this was just a state law, they're part of bringing that to us, we don't typically vote on denials, it goes through the appeal process.
And, and of course, if there's a question of whether the color changed or not, we might, we'd have to open up a hearing, or send it back out for another hearing, to see if it now qualifies under their guidelines, and come back up, because we can't go out and just look at ourselves, or it's a judicial type process.
Well, I knew there'd be a hearing in relation to that, but I thought we'd have to approve the HRB's denial before it went to a hearing.
Yeah. We'll wait, let Mr. Butler maybe guide us.
I guess we have, I guess we have, I guess we have to ask him before we table this, until we have legal counsel available for questions.
I'll make the motion. Do we table COA-17-17?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, then, the city about to say an aye. Aye. All opposed? Table that particular COA, 17-17. All right, Norman Tim would be reading these, but I'll ask Mary Riley, she would read the recommendations of other COAs.
Can I ask the council if there's anybody that will need to recuse themselves for any of these matters? David? No? Okay, that helps. What doesn't help is that I just got new glasses two hours ago, and my eyes are adjusting, and I'm half-blind, so bear with me, but I can see.
No, you are correct. I probably shouldn't accuse on COA-18-102, just to be on the safe side.
All right.
Can we, can we, Mayor, can we take that one first, so we can step up?
I can see it, I'm just not as sharp. Yeah, no problem. Okay, so bear with me while I take note of what's left. All right, COA-18-102, Music Construction Inc., applicant, Kentucky Owl R E L L C owner, request to install a sign at 110 West Flage Street. The recommendation, approval to install the proposed sign with the following conditions. Any modifications to the sign would be staff approved, and the sign hardware will be mounted in the mortar of the building and not the masonry.
And a motion then to approve COA-18-102. So, a motion by Councilman Chekels, a second. Councilman Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, the city about to say an aye. Aye. All opposed? COA-18-102 is approved.
Okay, somebody let him back in. 18. He wants himself. All right. So, COA-18-70, David Erickson, applicant owner, request to paint the doors, windows, and trim at 212 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval for the proposed paint colors. COA-18-101, Patrick Wayland, applicant owner, request to remove a tree at 111 East John Fitch Avenue. Recommendation, approval to remove the proposed tree with the following conditions. Conditions, the tree to replace the one being removed would be staff approved. And that's 18-102, well, we already did, correct. So, COA-18-103, Town and Country Bank, applicant owner, request to install a roof at 201 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed roof. COA-18-104, Allison Brigsby Spears, applicant owner, request to install stone on the porch at 209 South Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the stone on the front steps as proposed. COA-18-105, the estate of William F. Leckett Jr., applicant owner, request to install windows at 221 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed windows. COA-18-106, Alexander Bullets Brewery and Barbecue, applicant owner, request to paint the trim at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval for the proposed paint colors. COA-18-107, Alexander Bullets Brewery and Barbecue, applicant owner, request to install an awning at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install awnings with the following conditions. Conditions, the awning will be placed over the front windows only, and on the side door on Flage Street. The awnings will not be placed over the front door on North Third Street, and the color will be black. COA-18-108, Alexander Bullets Brewery and Barbecue, applicant owner, request to install two signs at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the signs with the following conditions. Conditions, the final size of the sign will be approved before being installed by the preservation coordinator. That makes it sound like she's installing it. All right, COA-18-109, Alexander Bullets Brewery and Barbecue, applicant owner, request to install outdoor seating at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the outdoor furniture at the locations proposed in the application. COA-18-110, Alexander Bullets Brewery and Barbecue, applicant owner, request to install lights at 131 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed lights with the following conditions. Before the lights are installed, the preservation coordinator must give approval of the size of the lights. COA-18-95, amended, Jacob and Katie Hall, applicants owners, request to add aluminum-clad windows on the new house at 209 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed aluminum-clad windows on the house. COA-18-111, Jacob and Katie Hall, applicants owners, request to add brick foundation on the new house at 209 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed foundation. COA-18-112, Jacob and Katie Hall, applicants owners, request to add a shingle roof on the new house at 209 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed roof with the following conditions. The condition, the shingles would be the black walnut color. COA-18-113, Jacob and Katie Hall, applicants owners, request to add gutters on the new house at 209 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed gutters. COA-17-17, oh, that's the, sorry, we're at the end, right? We are going to table that one. All right, so we ended with COA-18-113.
Okay, so we have a recommendation, this is approval for COA-18-70, and then 18-101, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 18-95, COA-18-111, 112, and 113. So I'd ask for a motion then to approve the recommendations by the historical people around those COAs.
So move what the conditions set out, as written by the clerk.
Second.
A motion, a second then, for approval with the conditions as spelled out by the HRB. Any other discussion? Scene, now, all in favor, the city about to say an aye. Aye. All opposed? The recommendations are clear. Okay. Under correspondence, we have a request for road closure for Buttermilk Days. Got that in your information? Is there any questions or discussion on that? If there's none, then I would ask for a motion then to approve for closures, as a request by Buttermilk Days Foundation.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make that request to approve the motion for Buttermilk Days Foundation Incorporated for their road closure.
And we have a motion, councilman knows, a second. Second, my councilman Butler. Any other discussion? All in favor, the city about to say an aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion, Carrington.
I'm going to stay.
Okay. All right, next, I think we have, the Rotary Club is asking us to approve the Annual Kids' Day. Let's see, on September 27, 2018. You know, they have that, that out on the front lawn in front of City Hall, and the fire department dissipates with that, and I think that starts, I don't think they have a time, I think that normally starts around four or five in the afternoon. John, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm a member of Rotary, of course, I don't think I'm accused of owning any financial interest at all, you know, any door, but yes, it's four or five o'clock. I guess they might need some setup time or something.
They do. Set up during the Christmas day.
Yeah.
They set up, they start around 4:30, about every afternoon, every year.
And I think this is the same request they had last year and previous year, so I would ask then for a motion to approve the request to use the front lawn of City Hall for the Annual Kids' Day for the Barstown Rotary on September 27. Motion by Councilman Copeland, a second. Second, my councilman knows. Any other discussion? All in favor, the city about to say an aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. All right, the next correspondence, we have a request for donation from the Oscar Gets Museum. I think Councilman Shepples, I don't think he'll be able to sponsor this, would you then?
Mayor, if you could, if I may, be in order, I'd like to entertain the donation request application from the Bardstown Historical Hotel Corporation, on behalf of the Oscar Gets Museum and Bardstown Historical Museum. We have Ms. Linda McCloskey here tonight to represent the Oscar Yet Whiskey Museum. Any questions that you may have for this request, I'm sure she'd be willing to make her, make the request known to the general council.
Linda, would you like to?
Yes. I am the new director of the Oscar Yet Whiskey Museum, that's on October 30 last year, and we have worked really hard. Most of you all know that I have been gifted the Prohibition exhibit from the Frasier Museum, and we have worked really hard to paint everything, clean everything, put the new exhibits up, and I have wonderful, wonderful volunteers in the community that helped me. When I opened the museum back up on May 19, I have noticed that a lot of people don't even know, the tourists will come in and they'll say, "We like to have never found you." And so I really need some signage up. As a matter of fact, different people in Bardstown, whenever I will tell them, "Oh, I'm excited, I have a new job at the Oscar Gets Museum," and they go, "Where? What are you talking about? Where is this?" And I have to tell them, "It's above the Brick House, or it's behind St. Joe." So I'm requesting signage, so that it would make Bardstown, the urban population is actually booming right now, and I would love to be able to add to the Bardstown as the national, as the bourbon, as the bourbon capital of the world, by having signage where people can easily see us, and it would be less stressful for our tourists. And I would also like that, as a matter of fact, because I'm asking, I'm a retired school teacher, and I've already had different schools to come in and do history lessons in the chapel, and I want to continue and enlarge that this fall, whenever the school starts wack. So I think it would be a great addition to our community, if we could have the signage to where not all people of Bardstown, but our outside-town tourists would know where to come.
You mentioned the chapel, I would, I know, most of us know that the facility has used quite often for a number of public events that are local in nature, in addition to just, it's not just a tourist.
Yes.
Destination, it's also used quite a bit for receptions, and weddings, and.
Showers, reunions, family reunions, have a lot of board meetings there, yes.
Then I have a question.
Yes.
This, this $5,000 donation request, is it going to be mainly for signage in this local area right here, to direct people down Xavier Drive, or coming into the outskirts of town, on the main thoroughbays, or where are you mainly going to put these signs?
What I would like to do originally, as step one of signage, I would like to have some signage on exit 21 and exit 25 off of Bluegrass Parkway, so that people would know that there is an Oscar Gets Whiskey Museum. And I would also like to have signage in Bardstown, directing them from the tourist center down to be able to go to 114 North Fifth Street, because a lot of people, when they put that in, in order to be able to park, they have to go down to Xavier Drive, and it's very confusing, and they'll park, a lot of them over in St. Joe, and they'll walk over, and they'll just say, "Man, you need to have some signage, because we like to have never found you." So I would like to have both, is what I would do. And then eventually, as I could get more grants approved, I would like to have them on I-65 in Bardstown, in E-Town, to where, when it was the exit for Bluegrass Parkway, and an exit 112 on 65 eventually. So I know that would probably be later down the road, but that would be nice, to let people know where we have them.
Linda, how many signs are we talking about?
Well, the two signs that I would like to have originally would be for the exit 21 and exit 25 off Bluegrass, would be two there, and then there would be one going down, pointing down the main highway to point you to Oscar Gets Museum, and then another one on North Fifth Street. And then I would have a sign right at the very end, so three of those signs. And I think what I can do, this weekend I went on, went to Owensboro, and we have like the signs, as you'll see, is over at the Bardstown Bourbon Festival, it's got a sign that's a trial level, and I think that those would work, to be able to point them in the direction in which they needed to go, and then have one right at the door, saying, "This is the Oscar Yet Whiskey Museum and the Bardstown Historical Museum." So that would be four of those signs, and the two out on exit 21 and 25.
And those signs out on the exits, do they have to be, like, standard?
Are those signs out on the exits? Do they have to be state-approved signs?
Yes, I'm told that they do. I'm told that they do, by the preservation officer.
You have to pay so much here, I believe.
Is that what... Well, originally, they're $100 originally, and then someone told me it would also be extra money for them to be actually installed.
Is that those brown-looking signs you see?
I would like to have those, yes.
Brown and blue, I think you're talking about the blue sign, and you, like, one might say gas.
Partly the blue, some brown signs are ones that are located more in on the streets. I see some of those today, there's several.
In order to follow the guidelines, in particular, and that pertain to this particular grant or this line item that we have in the budget, we have to prove, you know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, that this benefits our community as a whole. I could see, you know, improvements to the building, you know, if the building needed particular improvements, you know, because it has to do with the aesthetics of the building and things for our general community. But I'm having a little bit tough time to draw a conclusion or draw a line between, and we're actually trying to bring tourists in to your establishment, is that really benefiting our community as a whole, our taxpayers? That's my question.
Well, I think that the tourism industry, once we get the tourists in, they're gonna spend money, and so that's gonna benefit. They're gonna spend the night, and they're gonna eat, and they're gonna go to the other establishments that we have here. So I think yes. I think Oscar Getz Whiskey Museum, the people that have come in, that have found me, have said, "This is wonderful, you need to be having this out more, because this needs to be evidently one of the starting places for the Bourbon Trail." And I have been gifted a place on the Bourbon Trail website by one of the KDA officers, Colin Thompson. So we are now bringing more people in, and they're saying, "We need to see, you know, this Oscar Getz Whiskey Museum." And people have been very impressed with it. I would invite all of you all to come and see it.
David, your question, I think that's a good question. However, I do think the signs that would be located on inside the city limits, if you could make the case that that would be for public benefit as a whole, because to this point, some people, even in the community, don't know about it. So if you don't know about it, you wouldn't know generally maybe which way to go. So you see some of those signs that are already there, like to the Civil War museums, and on the home, the different distilleries and so forth. Those, I think those benefit both local people as well as visitors.
Any other questions?
You know, I'm gonna agree with you about, especially about signs on, trying to, people to find you where you're... I know in the restaurant over here, people constantly asking, "Where is the Brick House?" The signage, it's really difficult to display a sign where it can be read. It's gonna be tricky for you.
It is, and it's very tricky for people to find us, so I'm gonna really work hard on making it easier for not only people of Barstown, but people, tourists outside of town, or like to make it much less stressful for them. A lot of people are walking a long way in the heat, and they're going, "Oh, my gosh, we're so happy we've finally found you." And then I'll go walk in and go, "Is this the Oscar Getz Whiskey Museum?" And I'll go, "Yes, absolutely, you are here."
Well, moving, excluding the highway interstate signs, what do you think the cost of... Have you did a cost analysis, what have we cost, if you had this as a directional sign to your end?
Well, yes, there's two different ways I could do it. It could actually be the blue signs that you all are talking about, and I'm told that they are $400 or $500. You all might be able to actually get them done and installed. You all might be able to give me a better estimate on that. But then I would also like to have, they're like triangles, and you fill them up, and you can put the big signs with the arrow, and those are about $200 apiece. But I have found them at different times that are, they're on sale for $100. So I don't know if I could get them on sale or not, but they're originally $200.
So we're probably talking about a total of about $1,000.
The blue signs, probably two, minimum of two, and maybe three of the blue signs, and then four of the triangle signs.
Then you wanna have some on your property too, over there?
Yes, I would love to have one over the door, yes, that is another one. And I even talked to Kim Houston about that, because she said she was down there, and I think her dog has a following of like 500 people, and she said she was trying to take a picture, and she said it was really hard, you know, to even, you know, for her to get Spalding Hall in the picture. So I would like to do that initially, but of course, that would have to be okay by the preservation officer.
Is there a way that you can, on some of the existing signs that's off the exits that we're saying that are in the city limits, is there a way that you can attach to some of the existing signs? In other words, you've got, you know, this is this way to the Barstown Bourbon, this way to this one, this way to the Oscar Getz Museum. I mean, I would think that that would be a more effective way to advertise, or to let people know.
I don't know if I would have to get approval from the other people that already have those signs up, if they would be okay with me attaching it, but absolutely, if they would be okay, and you all would approve it, I would like to do this with, you know, the most cost-effective way that I can.
I would, you know, note that we did have a number of requests at the last meeting, so we've already utilized $15,000, and the total of $25,000 we have set aside for these type of requests. Keep that in mind, as far as, I know with the requests is for $5,000, but we've spent that much tonight. At least there's only $5,000 left. Miss Mayor?
I agree that you do need signage, you just brought a group in from Lexington, and there was nothing there. But I know your request is for $5,000. Is there any way that you could come back to us with exactly what you need? We're talking about, now we've broken it down to the signage that you actually need. Is there any way that you could come back to us with the signage that you actually want here in town?
Yes.
And then we would have a better total of what we could approve for your grant. Right now, it's sitting at $5,000, and I know that there's just no way that we could do that. I know that you need it, and our community wants it, but if we had a specific amount of signs and the total, it'd be much better for us to be able to approve it for you.
Okay.
If that's possible. I don't know if everybody else agrees with that, but I just think that's appropriate.
And David raised a point about some of these brown signs, I call them. You'll see, I think there's a few of them that have like three attractions on, then you have several now that only have one. That either could save you some money, or if it's not feasible to be on the similar signs now, then that's gonna make your request more expensive. I think that would help us, in case you have a question, if we had a firm number, would help us. I think it's supportive, so I think that's your recommendation, we might table it till we have more information.
Yes, okay.
And I would suggest, Mayor, that you do it as quickly as possible, because as the mayor already addressed, we only have X amount of dollars left, and there'll be other people submitting requests, and most certainly, we'd like to try and accommodate you. Need to be as expedient as possible.
I can do that.
Alright, then, please, would you like to make the motion and table that for now? And invite Ms. McCloskey back with a...
Yes, I'd like to.
A motion to...
Okay.
Table that.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, minutes from the, so July 10th meeting, is there corrections or additions? If they're on, then we can do this by unanimous consent. Okay, I have the ordinances, Tracy Hudson, that year, woman, I think her husband was involved in an Almondville accident. The car wasn't driving, so she had to at least pick him up, get him back from that. I don't think there was any serious injuries, but...
Was that in her pot ride?
It was coming back from the oil, so I think that's why she sent me a text late to say to me that she had to go pick him up, so it didn't sound like he was hurt in the hospital. I think the car was hurt, she says hospital, so it was a drive. But what I would do is just, I can kind of give you all, we've got the minutes here. Mainly, the focus of our discussion was the water and sewer projects. Quite, we have about 2.4 million of that's being carried over. It has already been funded by the KIA, longer, it was approved last year, so that's in order. That leaves a couple other sewer-water projects that we wanted to make sure that, you know, the council, we've already approved the budget, but we want to make sure we understand where the funding's gonna come from. We talked to our Bonding Authority, they're in lines, and they said we have the bonding capacity to handle those other projects. And then there was the question whether December of 2020, we have the current major bond issue for the sewer plant and so forth, which is about $800,000 a year in debt service will be finished. There's another water project, I think, of $400,000 a year, which also will be paid off. So that frees up about 1.2 million in debt service that started in December 2020. If we do these projects, there'll only be one payment that would be kind of a... Do the convenience, we have one more payment for each of the water and sewer project. We have one new payment, based on the number of years we decide to fund it for, I think somewhere between $125,000 and $140,000. That would be on the, I think, July, excuse me, fiscal year 2020's budget. So there would be an extra, there'd be pile-up two payments of like $400,000, $800,000 on the water and sewer current debt. We have one payment of like $125,000 or $140,000, depending on whether we do those projects on a 15-year or a 20-year amortization. And Tracy said, you know, we aren't any unforeseen issues. We have enough unrestricted reserves to cover that $125,000 payment that would be in the same fiscal year as those other two, so we're in good shape on those. And as for the renovations for, you know, the new property we bought, that will be for the Fire Department, the Allen Deluga property, as well as renovation at City Hall, which will support the Fire Department, as well as electric and cable, and some engineering renovations. And then also, out at the Kelly Drive Public Works area, there's gonna be some site work, being done some fancy, to prevent expansion of their projects. We should have adequate unrestricted reserves, both in the utility fund, as well as the general fund, to handle up to at least probably a million dollars of improvements. We don't know exactly until we get the estimates back from the engineers and the architects, but we should be in good shape to handle the funding of those. And of course, that would be paid back like the current internal loan that we're doing to purchase the properties. Each department will pay a pro-rata basis of their part of that, those improvements. So we just wanted to meet and discuss that, so that the council would be comfortable about how the debt service is gonna be retired on these new projects going forward. So we're in pretty good shape. Any questions, if you want to talk with Tracy or Jessica or myself, I'd be happy to. I've got some more detail if you need it. But I think it looks, you know, looks good that proposed projects are in good shape to be handled, and then also you can handle the general fund, projects that include the Fire Department and so forth, and Public Works. Okay, any other questions on the minutes for the Finance Committee?
Mayor, just so I could understand, this is to go, the pro-rata debt service that each department would be paying back, that just applies to what's been taken out of unrestricted reserves?
Yeah, it's any of the internal loans.
Any of the internal stuff.
Internal loans of that, for these projects. Certainly, the water and sewer projects, those will be paid out of revenue.
Right.
But since a lot of the improvements, Fire Department admin streets are not revenue generated.
So all the internal stuff, just...
They'll pay that back.
Right.
But there's added with money to fund the startup, a little also to, their budget's heights be increased to cover those costs. And we'll know better, we'll have a better handle on, once we get the exact estimates of the projects. Fire Department projects is gonna cost this, City Hall will cost that, Public Works is gonna cost this. But we kind of took a million-dollar number as just something to use that as a target, and Tracy and I think that they certainly were comfortable to be able to handle that. A lot of that won't be completed in this budget year, and certainly even some of these water and sewer projects, just like we carried over some this year, will probably be carried over next year, we'll get. Right now, I think we have $9.2 million worth of water and sewer projects coming to carry over. We won't get all of that started and finished in this fiscal year, so some of that'll be carried over to the next budget year anyway. And then Greg, I think, would you want to just touch base quickly on, we're able to find some savings on workers' comp?
We did, we, you know, we decided to switch brokers. We switched our insurance broker for, from First Insurance Group to USI. And once we did that, they bid out, they went ahead and bid out our workers' comp insurance to multiple different providers, and they were able to find us, save us about $52,000 by switching our workers' comp from Kentucky League of Cities to Kenee, which is the Kentucky employers mutual insurance. Kenee is the largest workers' comp insurance provider in the state. I think they have 30% to 40% of the market. All of our property and liability insurance will remain with the league, so the only thing that switches is the workers' comp insurance. Like the, I think the savings is around...
It's gonna be between... So it's like $52,900, $29,000, so it's a significant save. That was like, based on premium, about 25% to 30% savings on total premium, which is significant. Some of you felt very good about making that change. I don't think we're gonna lose anything in terms of switching companies. It's like saying, I think we've managed about 40% of all Kentucky's workers' comps to Kenee right now, so... Many farms here in Nelson County are already using them. USI ensures a number of large firms here already, several of the distilleries, and some of the larger businesses here in town are insured by USI, and they therefore have the Kenee workers' comp.
I have all this. If anybody wants a list, I have a list, I can send it to you, man, with all the major industries in this area that uses Kenee.
Can you send it to me?
I will.
And they also, I think, USI ensures Nelson County Fiscal Court as well, so they've got experience with government as well as private sector. Okay, any other questions on the Finance Committee meeting? Okay, any members of the council have anything to bring before the council this evening? Okay, we've got some cemetery deeds, David DeVill Hobbs, one grade, Karen Pride, two grade, Mary Magdely, two grades, do that by unanimous consent. Just a reminder then, Monday, we're gonna have a public hearing, July 30th, noon, for the municipal bonds for Bethel. So I don't think that'll be, it'll take very long. I would be out of town, so we've already made note that Tim Butler will be handling the, handling the public hearing. So I don't think it'll probably take 15, 14 minutes, it'll take maybe like 10 minutes. There's another thing else, and I have a request and motion for adjournment. So, motion with Councilman Shepherd, we have a second.
Second.
Second, with Councilman Copeland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.